Call the roll.
First, Henson.
Here.
Brian.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Elsa back.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Angstrom.
Here.
Okay, number two, approval of agenda. Changes, Your Honor, no changes this evening, move to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Henson.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa back.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Okay, number three, presentation of petitions and other communications, A swearing in of police officer Alexis Clark. If you raise your right hand, if you go to me, I in your name.
Hi, Alexis Clark.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
The best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge.
Of the office of police officer.
The office of police officer.
The city of Boone, Iowa.
In the city of Boone, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter as required by law.
Congratulations.
Due to supply chain issues, you haven't had the uniforms yet. It's time uniform today. Alexis comes from, coming to us from Stewart, Iowa. She's a member of the Air National Guard now and has been a full-time member of the Air Force before this, so we're very happy to have her. Big little scar. This is me from Bill Crane and hopefully go to the Academy in August.
Thank you guys for allowing me to be here and I'm really looking forward to joining you. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, next up, the thirty-one nineteen resolution determining the necessity in fixing a date for a public hearing on the matter of the adoption of a proposed Southwest multifamily residential urban revitalization plan.
So moved.
Okay, call the roll.
Brian.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa back.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Okay, C, set a public hearing for July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three at six P M. for the consideration of the rezoning of parcels. Legally, there's lot seven northwest, southeast, lot two southwest, southeast, excluding building site in north, three hundred and forty eighth lot four southwest, southeast from rural one single family residential to R three multifamily residential.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa back.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Okay, number four, report of standing committees, policy administration. Linda.
I do have a couple of things.
Okay.
Um, first of all, I wanted to share, I know the conferences going on with the Iowa municipal policy, the Iowa, what are they called, Iowa League of Cities, and we are able to go to that, and I did go and have the handbook from two thousand twenty-two, and I just wanted to share and encourage anyone that is interested to really go, it is a well-run and very helpful conference. And a couple of things that I picked up, and it's interesting because even if you don't go, and we have new members coming on, like quite a bit right now, I'd recommend that we purchase some, this handbook, so that they could use it, because I do reference it. And my favorite quote of the conference was, in the beginning, they said, you won't know everything about everything, and that's true. So it's a good resource to have, and I would recommend that all members have that, all council members. It's, it's a good resource, it's almost as good as Bill Skare, I will say, he's my other resource, so.
Very good.
Okay. Anything else, that it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Public safety and transportation, David.
Yes, ma'am, one thing, we've had an application for the adoptive street litter removal program, it's a program that we've had a while, but it's kind of been dormant, the chamber has submitted an application. Bill, is there any more information on that?
No, just requires approval, the general guidelines are in the packet, I believe the public safety committee recommend approval by full council, that's why it's here tonight.
Yep.
And I think we're talking about Story Street from seventh to ninth? Sixth to ninth?
Six to ninth, and then Allen and two, she later on at seven and eight.
Okay.
Was this one or two years, was this?
It's annual, according to the people, it's a review annually.
Annual approval.
Oh, yeah, the public safety talked about it, and we we had no trouble with it, so bring it to full council. As any questions?
Do we need a motion?
Yep.
Okay, I make a motion to approve.
I'll second it. Call the roll.
Elsa back.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Have your honor. Okay, thank you, utility committee, Terry.
He'll report, Your Honor.
Economic development, Terry.
He'll report, Your Honor.
Department reports, building official, Dave Yates.
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight, I just wanted to provide you with some information, a while back, council requested that I research some information regarding vacant building ordinance. So I reached out to my contacts within the what was the calls? Basically asked them if their jurisdictions had similar ordinances, and if they did, what did they consist of? I provided each one of you with a packet of some information that I found out. And I got a handful of responses back, and basically those responses generated the information that I gave you tonight. The three options that I kind of threw out there were in generated from some of the information I got from other cities. All three options fall under the auspices of nuisance abatement. It's just how they treat them, or how, what information that they store or do regarding nuisance. So what I found out is a lot of them didn't said that they don't really have anything specific to nuisance, excuse me, vacant buildings. They treat them just like nuisance abatement issues, kind of like we do now. And so that first option is we treat it just like we do now with a nuisance abatement option, we get a complaint, we go out and we investigate what's going on, we take the nuisance abatement protocol that we normally do and work with the owner, whether that's through abatement, rehab agreements, and of course, the last resort that possibly using six fifty-seven A to do something with a property. The second option that I got from folks is they attack this through nuisance abatement, but they do do some registration of the buildings. Normally, what they do is they identify what they refer to as neglected vacant properties, and they reach out to the owners through better generally saying that the city has deemed them a neglected property, and we're going to require registration of them. The things that they look at that may require the registration is, number one, they're unoccupied. Maybe the city has found them unsecured, they've got code violations pending on them, they might be unfit for occupancy currently, or they're unsafe. Generally, what the ordinances have required is, once the city has deemed them as neglected, they're required to register within about thirty days of that time. If they fail to do so, those cities then use their municipal fraction protocol to enforce that. The third option is, and this came from some of the larger cities within the, within Iowa, obviously have a lot more staff and time to do this, and yes, we require them to register all vacant buildings within the city. Similar issues with the neglected, you know, they, they identify problems, they, they require them to register, and depends on how much information from municipality to municipality that they require. Generally, owner contact information, any lien holders, status of utilities on the property, and so on and so forth. So what I did is I put together some of the folks that reached out to me, I asked them, hey, do you have a copy of your ordinance? I provided you with four copies of those, some are from some larger cities, I think one that reached out and was a city a little bit smaller. So I just wanted to present that information to you, some things to look at, and I'm happy to answer any questions or take any feedback from you folks, and looking for some direction.
This is vacant or neglected, I mean, not just vacant, but neglected, I mean, it's kind of lit.
So they kind of went hand in hand, again, when I spoke with some of these other municipalities, like they said, well, yeah, some require them just because they're vacant.
Okay.
Register. Many said, we don't require that unless we've had problems there.
It's, yeah.
Code violations, et cetera, et cetera. The vast majority said, no, we don't really have any sort of registration, we tackle it as a nuisance abatement that is spelled out through that, which we kind of do now.
How, how big a problem is this in Boone?
You know, we have vacant prop, vacant buildings, we have vacant businesses downtown. My question is, if we register them, what does that do for us? Does it fix the problem? I don't know that it does.
Tells us how big a problem maybe, but yeah.
Maybe that's it, but if you ask me, it's pretty easy to identify how big the problem is. Right down Story Street, and you look at the storefronts, and it's pretty easy to identify which ones are vacant, which ones are operating. So I don't think the determination of what's vacant and what isn't may not be the bigger issue here, it's what do we do?
You have a recommendation, a preference?
My personal opinion is, we've already got a plan in place through our nuisance abatement. If these buildings, these businesses are having problems, we have a process to deal with that through our nuisance abatement now.
That's complaint based, right?
It generally, it's complaint based, we do go out and self-initiate stuff, especially when it's easy to find problem properties in the winter when they don't scoop still.
Right, right.
It's easy to see that, so I just think those are things maybe that we can, as through nuisance abatement, that maybe we can just again, maybe be more thorough or tackle.
The problem with that is, Dave, is that when these buildings sit vacant for a long period of time, and no one's going in and out of that, like the iron cores.
Yep.
We don't know if the roof's leaking, we don't know what's going on inside that building.
Correct.
And, I mean, you're going to see more and more of these ordinances come about since that incident in Davenport. That's, that's going to spur a lot of people to think twice about letting these abandoned buildings just sit.
Well, and we've brought in engineers before. I remember a couple downtown, we, there was questions, we brought in structural engineers, we did it with the old Fairway Building. I mean, so you're right, it's complaint driven usually, by somebody goes, hey, I don't think that thing, you know.
I just, I'd just like to see the process a little more proactive than just clinker of it.
Is there any timeline, I mean, where it sits for twelve months or longer, or, I mean, is it, it's just?
Well, that's, I mean, it's simple up and down the street, you can tell if a building.
Right, but I mean, would that be a stronger?
Sits vacant for six months, then we probably, I mean, that's part of this ordinance, right? We'd have to.
After a certain time period.
Even, we could even address it without changing ordinance, just from a policy standpoint. This, you know, community service officer knows of a property, a commercial property that's been vacant, or any suspects is neglected for six months, or however many, then that, just on a priority list, be brought up to you, I assume, that point, or whoever needs to be brought up to for extra action.
Sure.
A walk through, something like that.
So when, when a property kind of hits on the radar list, one of the first things Ron would do is come to me, I would go look at the building and see if it met the criteria for condemnation.
Yeah.
Sometimes they do, sometimes they're not there yet. So that's where that gray area is, what do we do with the ones that aren't there yet?
Because there's such a thing as, so it's been vacant for six months, it gets on a registration list, and then it has to have a semi-annual thousand dollar inspection or something, just something to light a candle under the.
And some of these, these ordinances I provided for you do require that.
Keep in mind, it's, it's not just the vacant buildings. That thing, and they can get it or whatever it was, I mean, we've got buildings downtown that we've had question on, and we've had like.
A little ouch.
When they're doing rental inspections, there's been issues brought up, we're like, we better look at this.
And they're all connected, so it hurts the building next to it, next to it.
Yeah, so I mean, it doesn't necessarily just mean it's a vacant building.
Yeah, that's true.
I think, Terry, you're making a good point, you know, you can sit and not do anything, and, and perhaps end up with a disaster.
Well, and another thing, we, I don't know if we can legally do this, but we should require them to have insurance to cover demolition and.
Bill can answer that.
There is, in, bill, business owners that own buildings downtown specifically, I had a conversation with Han Bame today. They are covered on demo a certain percentage if they have a fire or a storm event or anything like that. There is no demo insurance, nor that can they get it for just, if a, if a wall, for example, attempt and story, when that happened, a wall just comes down, there's no insurance for that, because that's a maintenance issue.
Right.
So then you're, you're asking insurance companies to, to insure buildings for maintenance when it's the owner's responsibility to maintain it, and that's why it collapsed. So there is no insurance that you can purchase for that.
So we're in the same boat as going forward that we were when eighth, we had eighth and story, when those two buildings burned down and the city got strapped with that bill, right?
Well, I know we got strapped with the bill, I wasn't really involved in that, that was when Lucas said, but yeah, but to answer, short answer is yes. Now, I think one thing, if you would keep in mind, we have an action that we take called six fifty-seven A, where Jim takes over, and we get property through the courts, okay, we've done that several times on homes. But mind you, the average demolition on a home, when we get that through the court, ten to fifteen thousand, maybe if there's a lot of asbestos, twenty. Entirely different, we're talking about commercial buildings downtown on the cost that we assumed liability and we assumed ownership of that building, taking down on what that's going to put on the city for amount of money, I mean, just look at six twenty story street, I don't remember the numbers, I don't know if you, oh, eighth and, or eighth and story, when that was down, we had a couple hundred thousand at least, if I remember.
The number I heard.
So we have to be careful that if we take ownership of building, of a building, we feel that needs to be demoed. We're on the hook for it, folks.
Yeah, there's no way.
And you.
That costs back to all of you, so.
On sick or on eighth and story, we use, we have to have some grant dollars we applied for that helped.
Right.
One of the building owners had insurance, he was insured. The other one was underinsured, I believe, then we ended up working a deal, we needed to get it down.
And it was because of the fire, there was a lot of asbestos.
Yeah.
Asbestos could not be.
Which drove up the cost.
Drove up the cost of.
Had to be.
And let removal.
And mind you, that was a fire, right?
Yeah.
So the insurance is, covers some, has some demo insurance, we're talking about buildings that are not being properly maintained, and then there becomes a structural issue, there is no insurance for that.
Yeah, like.
For the homeowner.
Lynn's Lounge.
Yes, that's a perfect example there.
Gave, and I don't know that she had cover, was there coverage? We paid for it, I think.
Well, yeah.
So the problem is, then they, they sell these buildings on these tax sales, and these LLCs buy them.
Yeah.
They're not, then they just give them back to the city, when it's no good, then we get stuck with them.
Yeah.
And I don't know if there's any way around that, is there?
Well, I think if you look at the ownership of a large portion of the buildings downtown, they're in individual LLCs, so that if something does happen, they can just walk. So if you want to condemn a building downtown, it's going to be on the city's tab, unless the owner of that for some unknown reason hasn't set up an LLC, or has some financial resources that we could go after. If you want a building downtown, and you don't take care of it, and we have to demo it, you have a lot of money in the bank, we can go collect that from you, but all of these, I don't know about all of them, but the vast majority are owned by LLCs, they have one for that building, one for that building, one for that building, and, and they can just walk away, and it's going to be paid for by the taxpayers.
Well, then did.
Any other option?
To David's point, then, part of this ordinance should have an inspection, an annual inspection that costs them a thousand dollars or whatever it is, so that they maintain these damn things.
Yeah, can we do that, is that something?
You, you can do that, but how many vacant buildings are we really talking about? If you, if you're concerned about a vacant building that is in bad shape, we can already do all of those things. We have put our resources on residential properties, we did the Fairway Building, the Event Center was another one that we, we attacked as, as a nuisance and being vacant, we got a new person in there, they got it all. Pardon?
The one next to Wilson's, that museum.
Yeah, I mean, we got that, I mean, so I think we already have lots of things we can do if you're concerned about a building that's in bad shape, but I mean, how many are downtown, one that's vacant?
There's, there's probably a couple right now that are, again, the gist I got from some of the other municipalities, again, that was really pertinent to bigger cities, is the registration part of that basically just helped them identify, you're talking about cities like Iowa City, Council Bluffs that have huge downtown areas and multiple downtown areas, and it just, all it did was help them identify those, whereas most of our buildings that maybe come into play, I think it's easier for us as a city to identify which ones are occupied, which ones aren't.
And I think as our discussion has went along, it's become obvious that, you know, even with past issues, it's even the, it was even the occupied buildings that we should probably have a bit of extra scrutiny on, and to David's point, be perhaps a little more aggressive on those, having those, having those infractions documented, so that if they do try to sell off, that's on the record somewhere, and somebody could look it up.
Well, one of the things potentially is, right now, the rental code, right, we focus on life safety, we don't really focus on structural or those kind of things, the appearances, that's potentially something, there's a lot of rental codes that have that in there that we could look at basing in over the periods of working on more of the.
Yeah.
That was. Now that, that helps, that helps, doesn't help every, every building downtown, but it.
That's a good. The issue we've had in the past from rental code, I think now that we are rent, old code.
Downtown.
Another level of oversight.
Now, kind of what we wanted.
Now, we are getting fire guys in there to check, because most of these buildings do have apartments also.
I guess.
Now they're in there checking in, and if there's an issue, they generally would come to.
You have many downtown. Yeah, that you inspect.
Yeah.
The downtown buildings.
Oh, I would say, I'd say probably at least sixty percent of the, maybe even higher.
Repeat that again, I didn't hear.
We're already inspecting buildings downtown, sixty percent, maybe higher, because they are renting them, so they.
Vacant storefronts don't necess, necessarily mean that that building's vacant. It means there's apartments above and stuff, so there's people living.
I think we all want to see the downtown businesses.
Right.
You know, filled, rather than.
I just.
The digest.
Right, and I think, I, I just, my two cents, I think there's a concern if we don't have some way to deal with some of the downtown nuisance looking or really disrepaired buildings, if we're going to become a Main Street community, and I'll just put that in, because that really will deter from our whole kind of approach there, so whether, whether there will be more that we need to kind of address with that as we work, work through that.
Under the Main Street criteria, don't you, I'm sorry, under the Main Street criteria, don't you have to have owner buy-in?
We do have to have, but not from everyone, I mean, but yes, we, we have to have a certain amount.
I think the bottom line, too, is just, first things first is safety, so if we're looking at
Sure.
these buildings that are just structurally unsound, or have issues that need to be addressed, what Chief Adams was talking about, expanding the rental code to include structural issues within that, that seemed like a viable thing to do. And reasonable.
And they inspect them anyway, right?
Yeah, most of it's interior, but we, I mean, I'm not saying that.
But it's only downtown buildings that rent, correct? If they don't have renters, you're not expecting them, is that correct?
Or they, I mean, if they have a restaurant in there, we have to do.
But you.
There is a few more than just.
Okay.
That, but.
And who, who would have the expertise to?
Yeah.
Do that.
Well, I think that would be, that'd be the question of whether, there's obviously going to be some, have to have some more training to help identify, and then if that, identify some factors, and then, in my opinion, we would have to bring in an expert, a subject matter expert after that.
I mean, I think there's a lot of liability connected with that, a lot of expense.
And I have one other question on the downtown, are, and I, I don't know this, are most of those locally owned, or are they owned by people out of state or somewhere else? I mean, I know other cities, they have a lot that are owned from people that don't even live around there.
The rentals are mostly owned by in-town.
Locally.
Now, like I said, I need more time to.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, you know, this council had asked that we look into this, Dave has done his homework, and the purpose of tonight was to present what he's come up with. So if the council so chooses, we can just stand by and not do anything until we hear anything further from you.
Yeah.
Thank you for putting this together.
Thank you.
Hey, next up, finance officer Andrea. City attorney Jim.
Don't worry, Your Honor.
Director Public Works.
Thank you, Your Honor. The only thing I have to comment on or mention tonight is stop signs went up at first in Delaware, we public little break from the one on the south side of town, we put a temporary up there also, middle intersection, tried to catch the eyes and ask people, everything went out on social media and stuff to notify everybody, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, William. And your report. Okay, public safety, Chief Adams.
Yes, Your Honor. Tonight, we have the alcohol license for the Boone County Chamber, Chief Weebold, myself, Metz, with the director a few weeks back in trying to hone in. As part of the alcohol license, you have to identify where your license is going to be, and so there's a map up here today with, where the alcohol license.
It might be helpful, wanting to come on point to where you're talking to.
I'll be there, I'll wait.
If you don't mind.
It's my.
I'll try to zoom in.
So right on the bottom there would be, uh, sorry. Go ahead, you can. This is Seventh Street, so the alcohol license will end at the north part of the intersection of Story and Seventh. So no alcohol beyond this point, this diamond here, as you go north to Eighth Street, basically to the alleys on either side, this is where we're going to be, the food trucks and stuff, I think a lot of the people congregate more in this area, so we're going to alley to alley, and then on the north half, it really stops at this diamond. We did allow it to go to the west a little bit to incorporate Bingo, the right Bingo, in the road here, and then it stops on the north there. So we did shrink it from the original plan a little bit, I think this is much more manageable, it still gives the chamber the idea of having more area for people to kind of walk around and see all the stuff while, while being able to have their fridge, but it contains enough that I'm comfortable being able to enforce that pretty easily. It will be fencing across here with a single opening for pedestrians coming in and out of, and that will be all manned by volunteers. Alcohol will all be sold with a bracelet, correct, they have to have a bracelet to purchase, wristband. So with that, Chief Weebold and I both approved this plan, and we would entertain. both approve this plan and we would entertain any questions.
Where where is the, uh, distribution?
Agent Story, correct?
Correct. Uh, distribution point would be.
Okay, gotcha.
There there, uh, that's probably the better map coming with the decor amendments and the next council agenda will have a more formal, uh, formalized map.
And all ages are allowed in here?
All ages.
All ages, all in this area?
I mean, the point really is to make this a more family friendly, a walkable event from start to finish. So yes, as you imagine your Iowa State Fair type uh, event where one can purchase a beverage as an adult, uh, they have, so the four levels of security, of course, as the volunteers, they're looking um, and checking IDs and responding those that they see. Um, you actually purchased your beer tickets at, uh, at a separate booth than where your distribution point is. So that's your second level of identification and security. Again, you cannot purchase those tickets without said wristband. Um, then your point of distribution, they have to see that wristband and take your ticket. Uh, and then of course, the fourth would be the layers, the the pay please presence throughout. But, um, then at this point, once you obtain your your beverage, you can get out, get fresh food, you can walk around the event. Of course, you can sit and relax and enjoy the concert and any of the music as well. Uh, but this really, in my mind, um, it increases the engagement throughout the whole, the whole space. So FACS tournament, things like that.
So how's this different from previous years? It is that they can move around rather than be restricted.
Correct. In the past.
Marya.
Your tent, uh, was a small confined area and of course, these guys could try to speak better to that. This is my first public building, but, um, the the contained beer area was where you would have your beverage. And then all of the other events, all the other pieces of the festival were outside of that.
So state law says that you have to identify your area, right? When you, when you apply for an alcohol license, you have to identify for your your area. Our, uh, uh, local code talks about the fencing and the points and being able to for security, so.
And you're okay with where are you going to position your trucks? Isn't that water park there?
Uh, yeah, well, well, yeah, the water, the the water park, uh, it shows it clear over there. It's not going to take up that whole, it won't take up that whole deal, so.
Yes.
It'd be a hell of a slide.
A motion to approve this?
Motion to approve the liquor license.
I make a motion to approve.
Second, call the roll.
Williamson?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elsabak?
Yes.
Uh, and just one quick thing, they have started demolition on the north side of the station by with the removal, so that project for the station vision is started. Thank you.
Thank you. Your assistant have a report, do you have any?
No, no more.
Thank you. Next up, City Administrator Bill. Thank you, sir. First item here. Just a second here.
Okay, first on, uh, item is the Community Dedication Award. As you know, or for those new on, we take applications for this June, or excuse me, May first to June fifteenth of each year. Uh, I believe you all probably read my email that I sent. We had one, uh, applicant, application turned in. In past years, we've had two or three, some we've only had one year, this year we only had one. Uh, the person nominated for this year's award is Mayor Slight.
Mayor Slight? Thank you.
We haven't read that, had you?
Oh.
Okay.
So I.
I mean, thanks.
We did a good job of keeping it from you, okay?
So just a motion to approve, or I guess we need to vote. So how are you going to do, take a motion? I'm a little bit of the award, second Mayor Slight. Thank you.
Should, should you read this? Or?
I can read it if you want me to.
I think it's, yeah, I think it's nice.
Yeah, read it, though.
You know I'm going to pay for this later, right? Wow. Okay. So the, uh, the person that nominated Mayor Slight was Gary Irvine. Gary is with us tonight.
Thank you, Gary.
John has given approximately twenty years as serving the City of Boone as mayor. He will be stepping down this November. John has assembled the finest group of city officers and council members we have ever had, anything and everything for the good of Boone. John put his whole heart into it. He will go down in history as probably the best mayor Boone has ever had. John always listened and gave his opinion on different, on all matters pertaining to the city. This is a little different. This year, John has always presented the award in the past, but I certainly feel there can be no better nominee than him this year. Respectfully submitted, Gary Irvine.
Thank you, Gary.
You should have read that. And it wasn't just because council was mentioned in there that I want it read.
Oh, thank you.
It really was.
Very nice, I appreciate that.
So did we?
It's been moved second.
Instrom?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elsabak?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, my next, uh, item, if you remember, the county gave the city twenty thousand dollars of hard money. There are some discussion about it with last council meeting, and I believe you had directed me to come forward and you want to discuss it tonight. I will tell you on a staff meeting, I asked department heads to submit projects that they wanted to use this money for. And I got, uh, three projects submitted to me. Uh, the first one is from the Parks Department, funds for roofing an open air shelter. They asked for five thousand dollars. The Public Works Department are is asking to replace two garage door openers that are from the nineteen nineties. They don't mess with everything they have, uh, that's not in the budget. Three thousand, three seventy for that project. And then the Fire Department, uh, as you know, we're doing the, um, the, uh, extension over there. That requires that we take out a fire hydrant on the north side. The only one left is the one in that is in front of the Fire Department, it's not working, it needs to be replaced according to our Public Works Director and our Fire Chief. So Justin has submitted a request for seventy five hundred dollars to put a new fire hydrant in front of the the Fire Department, obviously, that's there in case there are any fires here at Fire Department, City Hall, things like that. So obviously, it's a pretty important thing to have there. Those are the three projects, they total fifteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars.
How much was the second one I didn't quite catch?
Oh, sure. Uh, the second one was three thousand, three seventy, and that'd be the garage door openers from Public Works. So you could approve these if you have other projects, uh, you want to bring up. Or you could, uh, so we have a little more than four thousand dollars left. You could designate another project for that or something you want to see, or you could add on to what they've requested. I know, uh, for example, the Parks Department, Mike has, uh, more than one open air shelter, I think, that he'd like to do a refund, but he asked for one, and that was five thousand, so. Uh, I'll be looking for input from you folks.
Bill? Can I make?
Absolutely, Kevin.
An extra one. I'd like to see that number of the park board for the shelters, the rest on the shelters, we need more than five thousand. So if it's possible, if you guys grant us more than that, that would be great.
Can we give them the remainder of that?
I think.
Four thousand?
Eighteen of them need to be reworked. Even ten thousand dollars, most are reworked.
Do you think one, you could do one for five, is that? What is that?
Mike said somewhere around five, but I thought that was a little high, but I have not looked.
Kind of high. Okay, okay.
But we would, we would like to have, if we can get money to more than just one or two children.
Sure, I would like to give the remainder to the parks, I think that's a good place to put it.
Yeah, is there a way that we can supplement to make sure they can get two done from other funds somewhere?
I think that seems a little high, in my opinion, for five thousand per.
Get the bids, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I said, I would think you could get three or four done, probably, they're not that big.
Okay.
So.
Right.
But yeah, go with lowest bidder.
Yep.
There you go.
Make a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve what Bill said and then add the remainder to the public parks.
Second. Call the roll.
Burr?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elsabak?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes. Hey. So here. Okay, so in front of you is your update, uh, for fifty three goals. As you know, that ended June thirtieth of this year. I will first, before I go to that, remind you of where your goals are for fiscal year twenty four. Uh, demolition and nuisance abatement, which is always one. Utilizing the field next to the Family Resource Center for soccer fields. Review of the city's parks. And number four is amend the sidewalk program to include improvements to existing sidewalks. This has been completed, so that goal number four has already been completed. Now, moving on to fiscal year, uh, twenty three goals. Uh, continue with demolitions and nuisance abatement. Uh, it gives you some numbers in there, I can certainly read them if you want, but they're in there of of what we're doing. Uh, we we've done, completed four demolitions. Uh, we have six pending, and actually, I just added one to it, uh, to, or this week, so that may be seven. Uh, we recently completed, uh, the, Dave gave a certificate of occupancy to a home on I think it's fourteen hundred block, Fourteenth Street, or hundred block. Hundred block, that was a demo, there's a new home there now. As you know, that's what we try to do is when, once we obtain property, like we talked about earlier on the six fifty seven A, when we, uh, take the down, we own the property, we work with developers or contractors to put new homes on. We've done that several different times, as you're aware, so that's just another one that was completed. I will tell you that we have a a lot that we demoed that we own on West Seventh Street as well, that are next to the park, uh, on West Seventh, West Eight. That I'll be working, uh, with a contractor to possibly put a home there as well. The city ordinance, number two, the city ordinance review. Uh, as you know, MIPA has completed review of our zoning ordinance. Uh, Dave and I have a meeting July twelfth to, uh, look at his recommendations. Before Ed left, I asked him for his, and then we got recommendations from the planner that's at MIPA. So we'll at some point be bringing those forward to the P and A Committee to start to see if there's anything that you want to do on those ordinances in relation to goal number two. The other one is to look at the whole ordinance book, and that's multiple years. Uh, we're starting to develop a plan. I have a person in mind that I just need to confirm with if he's willing to do it. If not, then I'll come up with another plan. So that, that's the update on number two. On number three, you can, I put in there what we've done to promote the city. Uh, there's several things in there, uh, answering. And then number four, um, the sidewalk program. Have not got any apps yet, but we do have money if we get apps. And obviously now it will include existing sidewalks as well. That is my report for fiscal year twenty three goals at end of year, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Is it possible to get Concept Works to do like a plug for the sidewalk? That might get on people's radars, I've tried to put it out a couple of times, even talked to some people that were thinking about sidewalks, but haven't quite gone forward yet, so.
Yeah, we can put the application process on.
Yeah.
And attach it.
Thanks.
I have a question on, on this, the current goals. And the one that is about, let me talk about that.
This year twenty four?
Yes.
Yes.
The one on the soccer fields.
Yes.
Is that, uh, what do I would say, relevant? If we have a committee that's looking at developing an entire kind of athletic field, soccer field plan? And we're really talking about putting these out there behind that, uh, what is it? Child junction, I mean, that area was what we were.
Family Resource Center?
Yeah.
Yes.
We were looking at that plot of land. Um, is that something we need to, I guess, think about or rethink? Because if they're looking at, I don't, and I don't know where they're at with that, maybe you do on, on how extensive they're looking at a sports complex or where where we're at in that whole community center discussion, because I thought, I don't know that we'd want to go too far down this road if they really are looking at.
Well, okay.
Some kind of complex.
Sure, I understand your question, so these goals are here. I have the full year to complete them. I will tell you that there is going to be Citizens Committee for the Wellness Center is meeting on July ninth.
Okay.
And I anticipate something coming forward from that meeting, either July seventeenth or the first meeting in August. To give you an idea of an.
Kind of their progress on what.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, can I add a couple?
I can, I can.
Go ahead and finish, yes.
Um, I can, uh, we can put this on hold, I mean, we have a full year, so.
Right, I I was just thinking that it maybe is, I'm flicked with what they're coming up with, I don't know.
Sure, yeah, can I add a little con- context on the, the, the club soccer? Um, actually, they, last season, they used DMAC, the fairgrounds, and then over the middle school also. And the middle school addition was just for, they just started that in the spring season. So when we did this goal setting, it's essentially a temporary uh, ask for the use of that land, it wouldn't be any like, you know, infrastructure or things like that that the soccer club would be using of that nature. And after, uh, our discussion, goal setting, actually found out that their biggest need was storage space in the interim for the goals and things like that, so they didn't have to set them up and tear them down, and and they had a single place to put them. Um, so that's one thing to consider. And then the other thing, like, I noticed when they were practicing over at the, at the middle school. I don't, if council's okay with this, adding this, uh, idea onto the discussion about childcare junction is actually utilizing more of the space at the middle school for the, uh, younger kids soccer, U four, U six, U eight. Because there's, I don't know if there's something wrong with the area for soccer fields, but it looks completely flat.
Yeah, I think you.
I don't know why they don't use it, it's in my front yard and.
Yeah. Suppose they're watching.
Have all the water be grass, I practice, and it looked like the ideal spot for, you could put all of the. Put everybody out there.
And if we kind of communication open with the school district about that, uh, if they're willing to do that with the coordinate with the soccer club.
Yeah, I don't know if the district club would have to reach out to.
They're flat except to the north.
Yeah.
But it just sounds like an ongoing conversation that, yeah.
Yeah, this would be just, what are they doing now? How can we help them consolidate locations at this time? Um, and the games for the U four, U six, U eight, they run on Saturdays. Uh, look at, at one time, and then, you know, if they still use eight and ten at DMAC, then, you know, they're two, they wouldn't overlap and be in the same spot. That's kind of how they structured last, last season anyhow. So if it's, I mean, I don't know, do you need direction from council, whether to discuss this with the school district about using more of the middle school area? For soccer? For soccer, yeah.
No, I think I can reach out it.
Okay, yeah, and then loop the, I talked a little bit with, uh, soccer club independently as well, and asked them about that, and I don't know if they have checked in or not. But it could be a really good conversation to have, I think.
Yeah, so then for the, the goal of the FRC lot is putting on hold.
That's what I would. It it looked, I mean, the middle school looks like a more optimal area than FRC's, especially for parking purposes. It may not, there may be some reason, I am not aware of, but. You want your July?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that. The times and everything, would you mind sending me an email on, on all those times you're talking about, so that I have that before I make that phone call?
Absolutely.
Talk with, uh, we'll start with Scott Kelly.
Yeah.
My fourth item, uh, if you remember, as part of the mainstream recommendations, council wanted to look at changing the parking on Story Street. Putting some, uh, diagonal parking on Story Street as opposed to all parallel, which it is now. Um, I met with Perry from SEH and we walked downtown and took a look at it. He has prepared a proposal uh, to submit a, a plan to us and their recommendations. The, it'll take about six weeks to do it, the cost of that uh, is nine thousand dollars plus expenses, if there are any to do that, this is money, just so you know, is not budgeted in fiscal year twenty four. So if you want me to proceed, then I will bring the contract to the July seventeenth council meeting for your approval.
The, the details on the proposal would be for angle on one side or?
Yeah, angle on one, and then, right, on Story Street from sixth to ninth. And then we also looked at, uh, Keeler Street, and it's already that way on Keeler Street, both in the seven and eight hundred block, it's just that they're swapped. They're not the, they're not on the same side in both blocks, like the the diagonal in the seven hundred block is on the east side, the diagonal on the eight hundred block of Keeler is on the west side. I don't know if that matters, but we looked at that as well. I don't know if that matters, but we looked at that as well.
And how many parking spaces do we pick up by doing this?
All right, that's the reason for them to do the, and but what it'll do is eliminate the left turn lane. You know, in the, what are they in the six, seven, and eight hundred blocks? It'll eliminate, and it's not that they're really needed. I mean, with the amount of traffic, I don't know that you need them, but it'll eliminate that to provide room. But that question or thing will come with their proposal, uh, when they, when they're ready to give it, when they complete it, if you all want to move forward.
It just seems kind of expensive for an idea.
Uh, that, yeah, I'm not sure how much we gain. I I'm not sure.
I'd like.
Whether it's really worth this or not.
And let's look at it. I mean, I get what you're saying, but.
The plan is where you're paying them. Because they have a traffic engineer that needs to.
Nine thousand bucks.
And and do it.
God, that's ten grand to do it?
That's ridiculous.
Plus expenses?
What if we just do it? We can always repaint lines. That's a lot of lines.
Well, that's just the beginning.
Yeah, I can just for the plan.
Just for a plan. Well, yeah, and so they'll put together proposal of what they recommend doing. To allow you more, to give you more parking spaces downtown.
Give us six spots.
I would say no. Could be a six million dollar project to do it, right? To actually do it.
Well, they, well, I'd rather, no, I mean, I think the pro, if they come back and what you want is. More diagonal in the six hundred block. The seven and the eight.
Yeah.
One side would be diagonal, one would be that. So you're going to get more spaces, but again, you're gonna have to eliminate the left turn lanes. And they'll, they'll map it up. They have, you know, they have programs for this, and they have a traffic engineer, uh, that does this.
We don't know if it'd involve cutting out sidewalk space or any of that.
No, this, this I don't think would.
And didn't this kind of come from the downtown assessment? I mean, when they kind of, that was just one of the things they tossed out. It was for us to think about, so.
That's the reason we.
Right, and I was just saying. Not sure it's required. It was one thing. They said, well, you could look at that if you wanted to increase parking, so I'm not.
I can't justify that at all. I don't, I don't, this study is not just the angle parking. It's a comprehensive way. Comprehensive, uh, proposal to look at all parking considerations or just the issue?
Oh, the, it was just what my direction was, was to.
I'll just clarify.
To meet with the engineer to see if we could make in the six, seven, and eight hundred blocks have one side diagonal.
Be better off walking down there and looking at Keeler Street and deciding if it's something we want to do or not, or can we do that?
Well, you can look at it. Sure, Keeler Street is wider than Story Street, I believe, right?
Yep.
Keeler Street's a little bit wider than Story Street, so that makes it easier, obviously. And again, you're gonna have to do away with the left turn. Signal, but that's only on one end of the block, folks. That's not the whole block.
Wait and see. We get more business in downtown to need more parking before we do that.
Agreed.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. What do you think? But.
Tom?
One question. At what day of the week do you need more parking downtown?
That's what I mean, sir. Yeah, it's.
I've never had a problem.
Especially right now.
Yeah.
Making any day of the week down there in every block.
Well, I think it'd be.
Spend nine thousand dollars, have somebody tell you to change it, that's.
I think it'd be a good problem if we had it, but I'm not sure that, I think this was just a recommendation.
Correct, and pick me from, I think some of the, um.
I think you want to let him go before he finishes.
Go ahead, Alden.
Our alleys are so used for unloading. And you. And you park the semi through the fire.
I don't.
Depends on where it's, I mean, I think there's a lot of factors, but I think it makes it tight.
Not, yeah.
I think at this time, I don't think we need to spend that money. Maybe, you know, it's budgets are gonna get tight here, I think, with the next years.
Yeah.
So you want a motion on that, though? To table it or to not do it right now?
Yep.
However, you folks would do it.
We don't need a motion or anything if we're just gonna table it. Not gonna take action on it.
I'll make a motion to kabosh it, I guess. I don't know how there was.
If you need a motion, you're gonna.
Yeah, that's just, that's supposed to. That we could act on.
It's not our first meeting.
A legal term. Uh, yeah, that's legal. No, uh, yeah.
That's why I was sitting next to me.
For term. I got it. I agree with, I agree with.
I'll make a motion, a motion to vote no.
Second.
Call the roll.
Enson?
No.
Sines?
No.
Mormon?
No.
Elsa back?
No.
Williamson?
No.
Instrom?
No.
Burr?
No.
One last item. This is an update. South Marion and West Park, they have not started yet. The new start date's July tenth. Uh, there are some supply issues with pipe that, and obviously, they're gonna do the infrastructure first, so their date. We've made adjustments in the contract and approved the start date of July tenth. This isn't the fault of the contractor. And I will let you know that on the July seventeen council meeting, there will be a change order. Uh, what they have done is they have altered on how they're gonna staging, and. The main reason on this wa- is for convenience for the people that live there. This change order will cost about ten grand. However, we've already got another change order in the positive. And we'll have another one coming with the cha- type of pipe that we're using that will probably wash out that ten thousand dollars. But this will make it more convenient, from what I'm told from the engineers, this will make it more convenient for our residents that live on there during the construction period. That, and that's just an update. I don't need any action. That's all I have, sir.
Right, thank you. Number six, consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you would like to remove and discuss separately, and if not, I need a motion to approve?
To approve.
Call the roll.
Sines?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elsa back?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
Enson?
Yes.
Okay, number seven, ordinance is a third reading ordinance, twenty-two eighty-nine, to allow the city of Boone, Iowa to change the C three limited district. Zoning Regulations Ordinance, Chapter one seventy-five, Section one seventy-five point one eight ten. Second. Call the roll.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elsa back?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
Enson?
Yes.
Sines?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Call the roll.
Elsa back?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
Enson?
Yes.
Sines?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Okay, B, third reading ordinance, twenty-two ninety, to allow the city of Boone, Iowa to change the Parking Regulations Ordinance, Chapter sixty-nine. By deleting Boone County Transportation and replacing it with the organization providing public transportation to the citizens of Boone. Adding code section sixty-nine point zero six seventeen and deleting code section sixty-nine point one nine. One, A, B, and C.
So moved.
Call the roll.
Williamson?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
Enson?
Yes.
Sines?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elsa back?
Yes.
To adopt. Second. Call the roll.
Instrom?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
Enson?
Yes.
Sines?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elsa back?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Okay, C, first reading ordinance, twenty-two ninety-one, to allow the city of Boone, Iowa to set fees for meter testing by resolution amending Chapter ninety-one. Section ninety-one point zero nine.
So moved.
Okay, call the roll.
Burr?[1764.51]